Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, April 21st, 2022, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. I ask that we call ourselves to order and that we all please stand.
This conference will now be recorded.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you. Anybody have any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I would like to discuss right up to the members, just a quick discussion on how the boards and commissions can meet and if they do a hybrid, what the issues may be. I've had a couple of people wondering if they can meet in person, if they can't meet in person. I thought we had it clear. I think Andy, if you wanted to just do a quick statement as to what we had decided.
Sure. Sure. So what Dan's referring to is for the different boards and commissions, how to meet whether in person or whether Zoom or go to meeting. During COVID, we had underneath the order that we were executive order that we were under, we mandated that. When the numbers were high, everybody meet virtually. Most recently, since the numbers had gone down, we had backed off from that executive order with information from the Chatham Health District and the Health Director, saying that it is okay to meet in person if necessary. So the way the town stands now, it's up to the Chairman of the Boards and Commissions to either meet in person or virtually. They have the option, as long as they can do it in a safe manner.
Okay. And if anything on a hybrid, how would that happen? Or would they need to go through town staff for that?
Yeah, we're still not really set up for hybrid. We don't really have the equipment to do that. So right now, we're recommending one or the other. Whether virtually or in person, but we really don't have it perfected to do a hybrid yet. Maybe, maybe a couple entities like the library might be doing it. Donna would know more, but as of right now, it's one or the other due to the equipment that we have.
Okay. If somebody had the equipment, would they need to verify with you or what? How would that go?
Yeah, we kind of try to stay close to the department heads that deal with these boards and commissions and try to know what they're doing, where they're doing it and kind of weigh in on it. But right now, it seems to be working pretty good. I know for a reason, Parks and Rec's meeting person. I believe planning and zoning is still virtual. So it's whatever the flavor of that board or commission, as long as it can do it safely.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Our next section is our public comment section.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to make sure underneath that item of addition or changes to the agenda, we are, we're going to ask to move up item number under new business nine C, the police vehicle purchase.
Thank you. To the members, Andy, we'd like to move up nine C to just under six B. Does anybody have any issue with that? Hearing none. I'll figure that that's an okay. Okay. So, thank you. Next, as I say, back to our public comment, this section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. And I will be keeping track of the time clock, just because we have such a busy agenda. Looking, I see no messages in the chat box.
I have one public comment that somebody sent us and asked that it be read into the record because he could not attend. So if you'd like me to do that.
If you could, yes.
Okay, this was an email we received from Mr. David Rose, and I believe I forwarded that to the selectmen, but he did ask that, "I am unable to attend the meeting this evening, so I would like the following comment on cannabis sales to be read into the public record. David Rose, 274 Wall Street, Hebron. I urge the Hebron Board of Selectmen not to block the sale of recreational marijuana in the town of Hebron. They should end any moratorium as soon as possible and swiftly to issue permits for the sale of cannabis under the state regulations agreed by both chambers of the General Assembly last year. The town already allows liquor sales in multiple locations and should allow cannabis sales from suitable premises in similar places. Massachusetts, which has several years, which has several years head start on our state, has seen no increase in teen cannabis use and not a single instance of sale to a minor. They have seen no increase in crime around cannabis dispensaries and no diminution or invaluable or customer usage in other businesses around those locations. Massachusetts has seen no negative repercussions and there is no reason to believe Hebron will either. Massachusetts has also found that recreational marijuana sales are a successful way of raising revenue, perhaps tens of thousands of dollars each year to Hebron to reduce the property tax burden and providing employment. Nearby towns such as Andover and Norwich are going ahead with licensing recreational cannabis dispensaries. And Hebron residents should not be deprived of the convenience of any revenue from such businesses in town. Thank you, David."
Okay. And seeing no other public comment, we will move on to our good to know, special recognition. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a bright star night for Hebron. We have with us a young lady that has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout within Hebron. I believe it's the first one, at least that I'm aware of. I'm sure maybe Diane Bog will speak to it in a minute, but without further ado, I want to make sure I don't butcher this young lady's name, but I think it's Brian Delaney Mallorin. And she is here for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout within Scout Troop 1028. And then there's a proclamation to be read.
Okay.
Statements first before you do that, or?
Well, I'll read the plaque, I'll read the proclamation and then we'll have both Ms. Bog and Byron speak to us. That'd be great. So whereas Byron Delaney Mallorin has been a BSA scout for three years, and whereas Byron's commitment to the Scouts is evidenced by her, along with three fellow Scouts, founding Troop 128, she has served two terms as Senior Patrol Leader and obtained merit badges for genealogy and scholarship. Byron is among the first female Eagle Scouts in the state of Connecticut. Congratulations. That's not in here, but congratulations. Whereas as an Eagle Scout project, Byron made improvements to the outdoor gathering area at St. Peter's Episcopal Church. The project involved clearing and removing the existing stone fire pits and stage, then regrading the area for the new fire pit and stage. Byron.
Bryn.
Bryn, sorry. Directed her team into two work areas. One team constructed the stage while the other built the fire pit. Old cinder blocks were repurposed into a firewood storage area that would keep the firewood dry and off the ground. Over 500 pieces of wall block, fire brick, radius blocks and capstones were donated and then assembled on October 2nd, 2021. Together with a team of over 20 individuals, including scouts from both Troop 128 and Scout 28, along with leaders and volunteers, over 100 hours were dedicated to this project. Whereas Bryn is currently a junior at Ram High School. She is a class officer, a member of the National Honor Society and a member of the Tri-M Music Honors Society. Whereas Bryn anticipates attending college and plans on majoring in data science, Bryn also aspires to study abroad. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Hebron, in recognition of Bryn's years of achievements, dedication and leadership in the Boy Scouts of America and our community, we hereby designate May 7th, 2022 as Bryn Delaney Mallorin Day and express our sincere congratulations and admiration for her accomplishments. Congratulations. We are so proud to have you come before us. Ms. Bog, do you want to speak first?
Yes, sure. Thank you so much, Mr. Larson. I've known Bryn now probably about 11 or 12 years now. Her older brother Ryan was in the Cub Scout Den at our house. My husband was the Den Leader. And while the Den meetings were going on, little sisters would be there and I do like paper crafts and other things. And Bryn wanted to be with the boys and wanted to learn more about the geocaching and all the other, you know, adventure activities. And as we could allow, she participated in them. And I was so happy a little over three years ago when the Scouts BSA decided to allow girls to form their own troops, because I knew of two people in our scouting family who I knew would immediately sign up, one being Mackenzie Wheeler and one being Bryn Mallorin. And Mackenzie unfortunately was just about to turn 18, so there was no way. But Bryn, she started right up and over the past three and a half or so years, she has gone straight through the program and she has worked so hard and I'm very, very proud.
Great. Thank you. Bryn?
Thank you. I'm so honored and thankful right now. I just, I'm very happy that I was able to get the opportunity to be able to achieve Eagle three years ago, like when they allowed girls to join Scouts. And I'm just very thankful and honored right now. Thank you.
You are such an inspiration. I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Please chime in, people.
Bryn, it's Mark Rivera. Bryn, you achieved Eagle Scout in three or three and a half years?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a pretty fast time. Has anyone ever achieved it that fast? Diane? Diana?
I think two of the male scouts did, but she is a founding member of Troop 1028 and she's the first one to make Eagle. And she's among the first in the state of Connecticut.
That's amazing, Bryn. I'm just, I'm amazed at what you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tiffany?
Bryn, I just want to say congratulations truly in all sense of the word, of the word. I mean, to, it's a barrier you've broken, especially as one of the first in Connecticut. It's a tremendous achievement and you're obviously incredibly engaged within the community and at Ram. And I wish you all the best in your next journey as you, you know, look to college and your future plans. We're all very proud of you and this is a tremendous accomplishment. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Utterly incredible. Congratulations. And thank you. Thank you for being Hebron. Again, puts Hebron in the map. So you can stand proud and we as a community can stand proud behind you. Thank you. Thank you, Diane. Have a great day. Moving on, we have appointments and resignations. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to announce tonight, under item 6A, the Director of Planning and Development, it's an appointment and there's a proposed motion. And pretty much what this is, is to appoint Matthew Bordeaux as the Director of Planning and Development effective May 1, 2022. That would confirm per charter that Matthew through the Board of Selectmen could perform those duties. He's been vetted. He was in the first round and was neck and neck with Patrick, who has left us unfortunately. And I reached back out to Matt and he graciously was willing to come over here and assume the position in Hebron. He checks out. We did a background check. He's gone through all the paperwork within the office. We checked references. I think he's very well suited for the town of Hebron. He's here with us tonight. So if you have any questions, or I'll let Matthew introduce himself and just give a quick little bio on who you are and what you've done and why you think you're a good fit for Hebron. If that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Would be perfect. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Charity, and thank you, Chairman. So my name is Matt Bordeaux. I reside in Manchester with my two children and my wife. Majority of my professional career has been spent in Manchester as well. I worked with some fantastic professionals and when I decided to try to run my own office, the opportunity in Colchester presented itself. And so I, I took that position. It's been a very interesting experience for myself, learned quite a bit. And then, you know, when originally the position was available in the town of Hebron, made sense for a lot of reasons. I knew your former planner, Michael Leary, have a great deal of respect for him and the work that he's done to guide Hebron to where it is today. It makes sense geographically for myself and my family. And, you know, I'm just looking forward to kind of carrying the torch. A lot of great opportunities I see for the town of Hebron. But I mean, it's clearly a very established and, and wonderful community. My, my limited knowledge, my experience downtown, very impressive. I really like what the town has been able to accomplish. And I just, you know, I look forward to kind of seeing you through the next, next phase of, of growth and conservation and, and just pursuing a well thought out plan. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I hope to get the opportunity to meet you all individually over time. We can talk about what your, what your plans are, what your vision is for the community. And as I familiarize myself with the plans that exist and what the needs are for the community, I will, I'll certainly be reaching out as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Move in accordance with the Town Charter, Chapter 8, Section 801, the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirmed the town manager's appointment of Matthew Bordeaux as the Director of Planning and Development effective May 1, 2022. Congratulations, sir. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Chairman Larson, you should take the vote, please.
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Trying to move things along too quickly. I'm sorry. Hearing the proposed motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. See, Donna is such a good watchdog. She keeps me in line, which I obviously need. Thank you. Okay, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, item 6B, this would be for promoting or agreeing upon hiring a new Hebron Police Officer. It's a Hebron Police Officer Appointment. Here's a proposed motion that goes along with the Town Code, Section 100-1. We're looking to approve Kevin Dowd. Kevin has been vetted. Our resident trooper's on here. If there's any questions, he's a retired State Trooper. I think his last stint was out of Troop C. He covered Bolton. So he knows the area. He was vetted through the Police Department, myself, my office, and seems like he's going to be a good fit. So he's also here with us tonight.
Okay. Okay, Trooper Dowd, you want to say anything or?
Well, first of all, hello to everybody and thank you for having me. I just recently retired from Troop K. I did totally only just about 18 years with the State Police. I did six years in corrections before I started with the State. Majority of my time was at Troop K. Happy to be here. I know most of the guys that are in Hebron right now. We've worked together over the years. Have a great rapport with all, everybody here. It's a good group of guys. I've worked with Bryce for a number of years too, so happy to be here. I live in Bolton, father of two. I live there with my wife, married as well. So you guys are about 12 minutes away from me, so I'm happy to be here. If you guys have any questions or anything I can answer for you, please let me know.
Mark, did you want to say?
Yes, yeah, I would like to say something there. I've known Kevin for years. We've worked together for years. In my 16 years of being a police officer in Hebron, this is the most talented, experienced, community oriented group of police we've ever had. Trooper Reed is doing a phenomenal job. We're all very happy. It's a great team. Andy and I have been working hard over the last couple of years to upgrade the Police Department, to make it more responsive to the community, to get us the training we need, the resources we need, and we're in a good place in public safety right now. And I'm really excited to have Kevin here. So welcome aboard, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll read the motion and call for the vote. Move that in accordance with Town Code, Section 100-1. The Hebron Board of Selectmen confirmed the town manager's appointment of Kevin Dowd as a Hebron Police Officer for the term to run until December 2023. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, enthusiastic, aye.
And myself, aye. Congratulations, sir. Welcome aboard.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next, we're moved up to nine C.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nine C. Proven purchase of a new police vehicle. Attaches information from the Police Department regarding potential acquisition of a new police vehicle. New and used vehicles are extremely hard to locate. It may take months to be delivered. The opportunity provided for the needs of the department with the acquisition of the vehicle with a quick delivery. Funding for this vehicle has been tentatively approved as part of the ARPA funding. The Board of Finance did approve this purchase at their meeting on April 5th, contingent upon the Board of Selectmen's approval. So just a quick history, we have, I don't have the age or the date of the vehicle we're looking to replace. We have a cruiser. I think it's a 2005. Mark, you can probably help me with that. But anyways, it's, it's not adequate to fulfill the needs of a police vehicle. It doesn't have the cameras in it, needs a computer. It's in, it's in time to be replaced. We were gonna not rush the replacement of this because it wasn't a vehicle available. We were going to go through the same process as all the other items on the ARPA list. But we had a vehicle come available if we act on it quickly. The amount of money we would have to put into this other vehicle to bring it up to snuff would be a waste of money. So therefore, we're trying to move this up so we can buy this vehicle so it doesn't go to another municipality or state agency. And we'll be in compliance. That's a big thing with this new accountability bill. We have to have our troopers and police officers out there with the proper equipment. So this is actually, instead of putting money into an old cruiser, we're going to replace anyway within a year. This is probably a better, smarter, more economic way to move forward. So with that in your pack, it's the information. There's a letter here from Trooper Bryce Reed to me stating the situation and the location. There's also the quote from MHQ about the purchase of the vehicle. So I was hoping Board of Selectmen has the authority for the ARPA funds to approve this vehicle. I would hope you would take that action. The rest of the items for transparency for the town, think of personate from other boards and commissions and entities to go to a public hearing, I think would be appropriate for the other items. But because of the necessity and the availability of this vehicle, I would hope the Board of Selectmen would act tonight in an affirmative manner to purchase this.
Okay, I'll read the motion. I'll open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the acquisition of the replacement police vehicle and associated equipment, including a mobile license reader or license plate reader for a total amount not to exceed $97,125 with funding to come from the ARPA funds. Again, I'll open it up for any quick discussion. Any quick discussion?
Okay, quickly, Dan, a little backstory. Last month, the gas tank fell out of that police car on a call that Andy had described, the 2005 Crown Vic. So it's to the point where it's, we repaired that, but it's unsafe and it needs to be replaced. And it just doesn't meet today's standards. So that's one of the reasons we need, we need to make a quick decision and get rolling and Trooper Reed and I were, because I was involved in the last purchasing and Trooper Reed came and kind of took that over. We were looking for a vehicle and we were told that it would be a year. In a year, we wouldn't even know what the price of it would be. It could go up 15, 20% and we didn't even have one earmarked for a year away. So this is a tremendous opportunity to resolve the problem that we're having.
Okay, I was there for that gas tank issue. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none.
I would just like to say, I think we absolutely must take advantage of this opportunity. We need the vehicle. It would take too long to get another one and we certainly don't want people out in unsafe vehicles. So it gets used plenty. So I'm all for it.
Okay, perfect. So hearing the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, perfect. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the Town Management Report, Item 7, A, B and C. Try to be brief because we have such a large agenda tonight and so many guests. Once a year now that COVID has kind of calmed down a little bit, I have started back in some of my, my in-person meetings. So the first one I had was with the Loveland Hills Association. I meet with them once a year to bring them up on town events, town projects, report on the budget and grants and activities within the town. So that was well received. We got a note from them, appreciating my visit. And I expressed how the Board of Selectmen appreciates them in town and what a nice facility that is. We are presently interviewing for a social worker for the Senior Center. We had gone back out again and we've gotten a couple of applications, so we're still trying to move that forward. So that's something we're working on present. We held an EDC breakfast once again as another meeting we haven't had in a while due to COVID. So it's going to take a little bit of time, hopefully when Matt gets on board to work with Diane Nadeau from the Wyndham Chamber. We can get a better attendance, but we were there and we talked about town events and the most We can get a better attendance, but we were there and we talked about town events and the most important thing of that meeting was we met the new RAM superintendent. I think it's Colin McNamara, so we had a good visit, we exchanged our information and we're gonna be setting up a lunch date with him. And I believe he's gonna start, is it June first, Mark, or July? I think it's June.
He starts July first.
July first, okay.
Andy, can I just pop one thing in real quick?
Absolutely.
Were we supposed to take care of the the drug policy thing related to the police or is that something we could do without Bryce later? I thought that was the end of the language.
We're not gonna need Bryce for that.
Okay. Thanks, okay, I just wanted to check, Andy, thank you.
Okay. We had another insurance consortium meeting, for those of you on here that don't know what that is, the town of Hebron about five years ago voted along with the other entities within the RAM Insurance Consortium to go self-insured. We still are on track, we have very low loss ratios, once again trending, so we're in very good shape. That is very, working out very well, so I always like to report that. We were instrumental in getting that in there, so that's kudos to everybody involved, thank you. I had a meeting with a possible developer to take over the Toomey Crossing behind McCorson's to try to finish that project up behind the library parking lot, so it was a productive meeting. They're having conversations with the Planning and Zoning Commission and that's gonna continue through the next couple of months. So hopefully we can get them to come in and do something that is allowable in Hebron. As you know, we've been working on the budget, that's been consuming a lot of our time. The budget vote is May third, the signs went up today. We're gonna put it on the message board when it gets closer and we have signs that say vote today. So hopefully we can get people in town to come out and vote. On that day, it's at the Hebron Elementary School on Church Street. So we've been doing that later on in this meeting, you'll be approving the informational text, so we'll be talking about that. So that's been a lot of the activity within the office. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you, busy, busy, busy. Okay, moving on, our next thing would be old business, the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds.
Yeah, so here it is again, this is the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds approval and the schedule of public hearing and special town meeting. Attached is the latest draft proposal of the projects to be funded with the ARPA funds. The town attorney has ruled on the project's eligibility. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance have reviewed the listing and have given tentative approval. The next steps will be to bring the information to a public hearing, then finalize the proposed project list and bring it to a special town meeting for approval. The town manager, me, is recommending a public hearing on May twelfth in virtual or in-person format. I think we could do that on virtual if the Board of Select would agree. And then hold the special town meeting on May twenty-fourth in person at the Douglas Library Community Room. And then below it would be a motion if you so approve.
Okay, I'll read the motion and we'll open it up for discussion and move on. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen scheduled a public hearing on Thursday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM in virtual format to present information on the projects proposed for the American Rescue Plan funding for the town of Hebron. Further, that a special town meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM at the Douglas Library Community Room to submit the proposal for WRPA funding to the voters for approval. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Perfect. Next.
Good job, thank you.
The cannabis moratorium. Potential next steps.
Yes, so I have, I believe Natalie Wood's, I saw her name on here, Natalie Wood is here from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it starts off with members, I'm pretty sure it's just her. So Natalie is here from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Will be in attendance to provide the selectmen with information on the next steps requiring the Board of Selectmen regarding the regulations or prohibitization of cannabis establishments in Hebron. So really attached, this is where the information is, the attached is a memo outlining considerations for the next steps. That's in your packet. Donna has it up on the board on the screen, thank you, Donna. And that would be from Pat Gallagher and hopefully the Board of Select had a chance to read that, so I don't have to reread all that right now. But I'll leave that to you, Mr. Chairman, and what's your pleasure?
Well, I actually did read it. And I'll open it up for discussion. I feel that, well, I'll open it up for discussion and then I'll state what my thoughts are. So hoping that everybody had read it, anybody want to start off discussion? Okay, here. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to continue the moratorium if it's possible, is that possible, Andy?
Yeah, I don't think we're in any rush that it has to be voted on tonight, but it was on last, the last agenda, we just moved it to this one, but I, I'll defer to Natalie. I don't think you're under the gun to.
Let me clarify, the moratorium itself is not under debate. The, what to do with respect to the regulation is to whether or not the Board of Selectmen would wish to take the action of using a just prohibiting it entirely or delegating to the, what's it called, Planning and Zoning Commission to use through regulation, allow cannabis. So that's, the moratorium itself exists regardless and that goes on until the end of December, excuse me, the end of December.
Okay, and I part of, part of being the town manager's part is being a mind reader. So I think because of the agenda, the items on it tonight, I think what Mark was referring to, and Mark, you can speak for yourself, I think you were looking to defer this to another meeting. If long as the moratorium could stay in place until then, and I think she just answered the question, it doesn't really end until December.
Yeah, I would like to push it out further and so we all have a chance to think about this more and research a little more. I'm not prepared to make a decision on this now or I'd like to push it to another meeting.
Okay, other, other board members, Peter?
Just along those lines, as we're thinking about this, Natalie, is there an option to act, to extend the moratorium beyond December?
We've extended it once already and I would, we would have to actually probably speak to the town attorneys to see whether or not the same conditions under which we extended it the first time are allowable to do it for a second time. What's it called, if, you know, if that's true, we could certainly extend it longer. But again, it would have to be a chat with the town attorney to see if that's possible.
Okay, I mean, I'm interested in understanding if that's even an option along the lines of your wait-and-see approach. Could extending the moratorium allow for that as opposed to needing to pass an ordinance or pushing it back to the planning and zoning? So if that, if it's possible to ask that question, I would appreciate having that clarification to see if that is indeed an option.
I have no problem answering that question and then Matt, Matt will be coming on as the planner. Pat, Pat was kind of the go-between, between the planning and zoning and this moving forward with myself and the Board of Selectmen. So hopefully, you know, Matt's gonna be a busy man when he hits the ground running in May. But I think it'll, it'll get us a little bit more time now, some people speak to the questions and answers. I just don't want to put Natalie on the hook all by herself.
And just that, what I would ask is that December thirtieth, if it can be extended, that's one thing. But if, if it can't be, just bearing in mind the time, because if it had, there has to be, you know, redraft, you know, drafting regulations and that process, it just takes time. So I would not put it off too long, let's just put it that way.
Feeling of other members? Yes, go ahead, please.
I agree with Mark, I think we have, you know, I want to be mindful that we have a rather long agenda tonight because we have some items to get caught up on and this deserves, I think, rigorous discussion and debate. But I would agree with Chairwoman Wood, we need to make a decision ultimately. I think to continue to push it off for too long is not in the best interest of setting the policy that we'd like the town to follow. So I would be fine if we wanted to postpone this discussion for another meeting, but I think it should happen soon. Thank you.
Gail?
I pretty, pretty much agree with Mark, we, we're not prepared to make that decision tonight. I think we should put it off a couple of meetings and what Tiffany said, we need, we can't put it off too long because Natalie told us there's a lot of regulations that would need to be drafted. So I'm fine with not voting on it today.
Okay. I think that's the flavor of the board. I myself have no problem with people going to Andover or Norwich if that's what they want to do to get their stuff. I don't want to see it in Hebron, but that's my own personal thing, but we can open that up for discussion at a later date. So we'll table that for now, if we just keep it on the agenda and see how busy we are next meeting, maybe we can put it on at that.
Okay, yeah, I can keep it on the agenda, that's, I just think in flavor with the amount of people we have waiting to speak and go through items tonight. I think we can get more informed and like Tiffany said, spend the amount of time and debate that needs to be spent on this item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Natalie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Any other old business? Hearing none. Our next would be our new business, the Hebron Green Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, nine A, Hebron Green Committee. Members of the Hebron Green Committee will be in attendance to provide selectmen with an update on the Green Committee's work and the goals for the future. One of my favorite groups and I think Caitlin Hershey is with us, maybe with a couple of other members on here tonight. So if it's okay, we can turn it over to Caitlin.
Yes, please.
Yes. Hi, Chairman Larson, hi, rest of the Board of Selectmen. I'm here with a couple of members tonight, I have Mike, Lydia, and John. We're very excited to be here tonight and as you know, we've got kind of a big year coming up. But the biggest thing that we really wanted to talk about tonight was the Earth Day celebration. Most of you have attended in the past, you guys kind of know what we do, but for anyone who doesn't, typically we do a roadside cleanup townwide. So that is sort of the biggest main attraction. Every year, we try to get as many people out on the roads as we can. Since COVID has hit, we've kind of done this, you know, a little bit more laid-back version. We don't formally meet anymore, but we really are encouraging residents to clean up their curbside at least. And once you get out there and you start picking up the nips and finding mailboxes and tires and bumpers and all these other crazy things. I think a lot of times people end up going a little bit further than they think, just because there's so much to pick up out there. So, you know, we're encouraging residents to do any, anything on their road, anything on their curbside. Department of Public Works has graciously provided us with a dumpster at Town Hall again, so we have a nice central location for everyone to throw any of their, you know, waste that they've picked up on the side of the road. We do not encourage recycling of any of it, it's all a little bit too dirty. And we, of course, want everyone to be cautious of traffic, wear bright clothing, you know, pay attention to your surroundings. But we'd love to invite everyone listening in and all our Board of Selectmen to join us and do some curbside cleanup. Dan has done some pretty hard-working cleanup in the past. I have seen him bleed for a plastic bag. And that is going to mostly be on Saturday. So Sunday is something new for us. We are opening the first Hebron Swap Shack. So, you know, of course, we're, you know, we're online and we have a couple of members, so if anyone has any questions, please, you know, the floor is yours. Or, you know, maybe you can put them in the chat, but we are hoping to open every Sunday from ten to two. This Sunday is going to be sort of our grand opening, you know, we're encouraging anyone to come down and bring, bring their usable, clean, workable items with no missing pieces. If anyone is looking for more information on the Swap Shack, you can go to hebrongoesgreen.com backslash swap shack, one word. Or if you just go to hebrongoesgreen.com, there's a button right on the homepage. In there, you will see a list of anything that is acceptable or not acceptable. We are hoping to have an insert in tomorrow's River East as well about it, so you should have a hard copy coming to every home in Hebron if anyone's looking for that. But it's, you know, a fairly small building, it's a little red building right next to the electronics bin, I think most people have probably seen it by now if you go down to the transfer station. But, you know, nothing huge, nothing dirty, you know, things that are going to be able to be used and kept out of the waste stream, which right now, you know, Gordy puts a lot of items on the side, on the sidewalk, that people might be throwing out that could be used. And we're just kind of trying to, you know, mitigate that and make sure that we can keep as much out of the waste stream as possible. We have, you know, a couple other projects coming up this year, but Earth Day is our big day. So we really wanted to come on tonight and just discuss Earth Day and make sure that, you know, we formally invited everyone. I know it's a little bit last minute, we're supposed to be on the last one that got canceled, so I apologize. But hopefully everyone is available this weekend and able to do some curbside cleanup and stop by the Swap Shack.
Thank you. I, as, as Caitlin has stated, I have participated, I think virtually about every year that it's been done. It is a fantastic event, I love doing it. I, one of my biggest pet peeves is the broken glass and like I always say, you know, if we cut ourselves, we can go to a doctor. If a dog or a fox or any other wildlife cuts themselves, they don't have that ability. I urge if you can pick up the broken glass, where, you know, get those, what are they, they have gloves now, kevlar or something in them, they're supposedly cut-resistant, but glass is such a big enemy of so much wildlife. And, and I just praise you people for putting this thing on every year, it's such a great event. Anybody else have anything? Anybody? Tiffany, yes, please.
I'll go, I'll jump in. So, you know, I've known Caitlin for some time and I've also participated in her Earth Day cleanup. And I just want to take a moment to commend you and your leadership and all of the Green Committee members. I think this committee is really important, I think it's, it's important to the values of the town. I think it's important for the sustainability of not just the town, but for the planet. And we can all do our own little part to stem climate change and to keep our town green and healthy. And I just really value all of your contributions and thank you so much for sharing this with us tonight and thank you for all you do.
So, you know, you're saying there's gonna be in the flyer tomorrow, information on this Swap Shack?
Yes, so we actually dropped, John actually dropped off a big box of inserts this week. So there should be, it's gonna be two-sided, it kind of looks like craft paper and it's going to have what's acceptable on one side and then the unacceptable items on the back. There are, you know, some unacceptable items that are some common things, you know, gas-powered, you know, like little tools, anything flammable, things that like probably someone might be able to use again. So at the bottom of that back page, we've actually put a little bit of a section about some uncommon items that, you know, really are probably uncommon items that, you know, really are probably usable again, but have other places that can be recycled or other places that they belong around town. For example, books, right? We don't necessarily want a ton of books in the Swap Shack, but the Douglas Library will take them for their book sale and that's what helps fund, you know, all their programs and friends of the library and stuff. So we're trying to really educate the public, not only on, you know, keeping things out of the waste stream and reusing, but also where can some of these other items go that don't necessarily belong in the Swap Shack, but we have resources for elsewhere in town. I mean, people, you know, don't really realize that we have a lot of recycling resources available. Some, most of them are free. And so we're really just trying to increase that education where we can.
Okay, great. Perfect. I'm going to be out of state Monday or Sunday. So I won't be able to be there. I'm sorry.
Oh man, we'll keep an eye out for that flyer and then we hope to see you down at the Swap Shack.
Someone could be in the swaps check from your group during its hours of operation or?
Yes. So we are planning on attending every weekend. It's 10 to 2 every Sunday. So it's not an incredibly large amount of time. It's not like we need another Gordy or anything at this point. But the plan really is that we can educate upfront, talk to people, kind of get our rhythm and our flow. And eventually, we'd really like it to be self sustaining and unmanned, you know, not manned. We probably will have people coming in and cleaning up or picking out or rotating things out. But we're hoping to eventually, you know, probably in another year or so. It's going to be a little bit of time. We're hoping that it will be self sustaining.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, perfect. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you guys.
Hey.
Next. Next, Mr. Chairman, I believe is item 9B, and that would be Pollinator Pathway Resolution. So the attached, is there a proposed Pollinator Pathway Resolution as recommended by the Hebron Pollinator Conservation Project and edited by the Hebron Green Committee for consideration by the Board of Selectmen? I also believe that Michelle Sinkaz is here tonight to possibly answer questions when you're ready to do that. And the actual new proposed Pollinator Pathway Resolution is in your packet. The one, the one thing I apologize for is I, I didn't get a chance to meet with you. I know you wanted to see the different versions of what was changed. And that is not in the packet. I apologize. But this is a new one.
Yeah, as I, as I say, and my questions are, I mean, the other, the other resolution hasn't even been out there for not even a half a dozen months, I don't think. And already they want it changed. And I think it's, it's important to know what the side by side comparisons are.
Would you allow me to tell you?
In a second. Yes, please. Yeah. Also, I want to know what the impact's going to be on the town, on how the town manages its properties. And I think we also need to know how it's going to impact the average homeowner and property owner. So opening it up, you know, what's the feeling of the board? Are we ready to discuss this? Or we have Michelle on so she can at least give us her version?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be helpful to know the changes at the very least and the differences, because I do remember reading a version of this, but you know, I, that was months ago. I don't remember exactly what's different. I would find that helpful if other members of the board would find it helpful.
It ended up being a very small change and it had to do, I think the word would be emphasis. On the front page of the document, the one that you probably have in your packet, it says, "And in so doing, call upon the community of the town of Hebron to take cognizance of this initiative and to encourage the creation, restoration, and enhancement of pollinator habitat and native biodiversity on land managed by the town of Hebron." Blah, blah, blah. But basically, it says to encourage the creation, restoration, and enhancement. Previously, we had said, "And as means allow to create, restore, and enhance." And the question was, you say, "As means allows," made it sound as if it was an expectation or an order to be done. The Green Committee, if I'm explaining that properly, just felt that that wording was too forceful. So we changed it to encourage the, these enhancements of pollinator habitat. That part was a change. And the other change was actually an omission from the first draft that you may have seen. And it was the last paragraph where it now includes, "And in so doing, to assist residents and businesses in making Hebron a pollinator-friendly community, the town shall support, encourage, and to sponsor, when feasible, educational programs, lectures, workshops, and demonstrations, projects such as pollinator gardens." And essentially, this is what the town is already doing, meaning it has supported us by providing funding for the Kenny Road site. The library has supported us in sponsoring a town question and answer where I gave a, well, my team gave a presentation about what the Pollinator Pathway is. So they have not restricted us. The town has not given any restrictions of us and has in fact been supportive of us doing visible signs of pollinator actions. So as far as the town residents are concerned, we did have 25 people attend our meeting at the library and they were very encouraged, very interested, very surprised, and enlightened to find out about the value of pollinators and biodiversity. And we're very encouraged to take it upon themselves to plant native plants and to reduce invasives. And I should add, part of what is going on is this Sunday, we have a woman, Lydia Pan, who is the president of Wild Ones, a environmental group, a national environmental group, coming to do a walk, talk, and cut about invasives, because removing invasives is as much a proponent of pollination as planting. So we are going to take a walk through the Raymond Brook Preserve and identify what are, I think we're going to identify seven different invasive plants and weeds and such. And she will demonstrate how to remove them. So that will be something that people will be able to do on their own property. So the town has been supportive in that. And we do now have a, an island land at the entrance to Burnt Hill where the Park Department has said we can establish that again as a, an additional pollinator garden landscape site. So things are working well and it's in part, I think, having a resolution is simply a further affirmation of the town's support in this regard. And we have had nothing but positive things to be said from individual townspeople.
Okay. Thank you. As, as I say, I think I would like to have the two pieces of paper side by side. I'd also like to just clear it with Craig at Parks and Rec to verify that he feels that this isn't going to create any, any issues with any of the things that he does. I would suggest to the, to my board members that we keep this on the agenda and do a final determination on this next, next time. One of the problems with the budget, everybody's been so concentrated on budget. Everything else has been kind of, you know, you catch it when you can. What's the feeling with, with the members?
I agree with you, Dan. As much as I usually vote for all these things, I want to know what kind of an impact this is going to have. I want to know what point of impact you might be wary of, or what is the concern of impact? I don't know. That's why I want to see the two versions side by side. And also to see what Craig at Parks and Rec says. Well, Craig was the one that came to us and told us that we were keeping that property for the island. We did not to him. So I believe he was very constructive and positive about that.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I'm fine if you guys don't come. I like the changes because they have talked. I thought that was a little bit too aggressive with this.
I can't.
Peter can't understand you. I'm sorry.
I mean, if, if.
Please, this is the, I have to have the board members, please. Peter, you want to try it again?
I am a board member, Dan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry.
I was just, I was just saying if the rest, I think what Peter was getting at was that he's comfortable waiting, I think. I don't want to speak for him while he works on his issue. And if, if, if y'all aren't ready, that's fine. I mean, we could, we could push this off as well. You're right with budget being the focus that, you know, we haven't had a lot of time to spend on this. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I agree with everybody. I would, I would like to push this back a little and think about it. And one thing I was concerned about this, does this create any additional responsibility for the town? Or do we have any legality or legal issues involved if we engage in this and we don't follow through or?
Well, that's what, that's what we need to verify.
Okay, who's going to answer that?
As I say, at this point, that'll be some of the questions. It will be talking, or I'll be talking to you, or Andy will be talking to you. We're talking to Craig. You know, so we'll just try to get everybody to compile their questions, hopefully within the next week or so. And then the following week, we'll try to get answers so that we'll have them for our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to just, in closing my section, to say that we have already discussed the fact that this is a resolution, which is simply an expression of the intent of having all parts of the town be in support and be active in planting native plants, removing invasive plants, trying to get the bees healthy. It is not an ordinance. There is not a sign. There is not anything to negatively impact anybody if they do or do not participate.
Okay, and that's what I said. That, that's what we're trying to just verify. You know, we just want to make sure we do our due diligence also. So I ask you to please just bear with us, you know, a couple of weeks while we do that and we can get our questions verified and checked out. So we'll keep that on the agenda until next time and we'll go forward with that at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next thing would be the adopted Fair Housing Resolution. Andy?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was on mute. Item 9D, Adoption of Fair Housing Resolution. April is Fair Housing Month. And receipt of a small city's CDBG grant funding to the town of Hebron has an ongoing obligation to support fair housing and equal opportunity. It is a State of Connecticut Department of Housing Program requirement that Hebron actively evidence its commitment. The attached resolution should be adopted to reaffirm the town's commitment to fair housing. So this is standard. We've done, this board has done it before. So it shouldn't become as a surprise.
Okay. I'll read the resolution. Whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice, and whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas Connecticut Fair Housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity, or expression be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas the town of Hebron is committed to upholding these laws and realizing that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Hebron endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for the, all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the Chief Executive Officer of the town of Hebron, or his or her designated representative, is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of Hebron, and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, or the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, legal services, or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities. Excuse me. Adopted by the Hebron Board of Selectmen on April 21st, 2021. So upon hearing the resolution, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Tiffany?
Tiffany Tilly.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Whitman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Okay. Next would be the 2022, 2023 Budget Communications. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, we're kind of under the gun, we pushed this meeting out, this would have been on the last meeting, so you're gonna have to bear with me. And I think Donna had to make some changes, so we're gonna show a couple different versions, the one we did last year, and the one that my office is recommending we do this year. I would been in the communications with the chairman of the Board of Finance, along with the chairman of the Board of Ed, and myself as the town manager for the town of Hebron. So the overall purpose of this is to advise the voters of the information they're going to be voting on in the booth, the questions, the CIP, the percentage broken out by entities. So we're proposing, and I don't know, Donna, can you put up the new one on the screen? Are you able to do that? So this looks a little different than, than last year, and we'll show you last year's in a minute, but what we're proposing is to show you, you know, of course, the expenditure budget history, the CIP items and the funding, and then as always, the pie chart that lists the schools' RAM, government, capital improvements, and open space. So because of the timing, we need to get this done, we have to have 4,000 printed by the beginning of next week. So we would need approval on how you want to move forward tonight. I've taken the liberty to do a couple of things, which I normally would not do, because this needed to be approved by the town's attorney, which I believe we have, did we finally get confirmation, Donna?
Not yet, I'm gonna be checking my email soon, but not, not as of seven o'clock.
Okay, so he's got it, I suppose he's gonna get back to us so we can go to print. But, you know, there were some cuts made by the Board of Finance that, to the towns and to the school budget. So they have bottom line, it's up to the selectmen to approve where that comes from. So on this slide here is a recommendation for myself, the town manager, that there was mention of open space, and it was a steeper cut than I'm proposing here. But in order to have this factual flyer to go out to the voters, we wanted to make sure it represented what, what we're looking to do. So I took the liberty to reduce the reduction to open space by, to $25,000. That would match the amount of money we gave them last year, 125. I think it was proposed to have a, a steeper cut in that, almost like, I don't know, 38 or something thousand, but we put the rest of the cut into the general government budget, and we'll, we'll just try to find that, so we wouldn't need the Board of Selectmen to decide where that's gonna come from, other than it would come out of the general government side. But in order to have accuracy with this flyer, you guys hadn't decided, you're gonna have to decide tonight, so we would have had to print this showing the original $150,000 that was in there without the recommended bottom line number from the finance, the finance board. So what we did is trying to be proactive and having a few conversations with some of the selectmen. This is what we put on there, hopefully to get approved. And if you guys want something different, this isn't to sway you, or, or to, to, to make up your minds, it's just because of the timing, we want to go to print, it was an option, we can change it back. The other thing we did is we took the numbers off for the schools. You know, RAM's numbers have been up there, I'm not sure whatever possessed them to ever start getting put on the flyer, originally years and years ago, it wasn't on there. I'm not sure what that does or doesn't do, but we didn't have the town's number of employees up there. So I think if we're gonna do that, or if that's something the Board of Selectmen wants to do, or in the future, I think all entities that are involved in the compilation of the budget should be consistent. And we don't have time to do that. We just got information about that today, and I would not be able to do a history of the town employees. I mean, there's nothing that's not transparent, we have 47 full-time employees, and we have 103 to 106 part-time employees. But in order to try to do a year-to-year comparison with the town side, we, we can't do that. So I think, in all honesty, if we're gonna continue to show numbers, the numbers in the audit are gonna be different than the ones that we have here, and the numbers that we put into the state are gonna be different than the ones that are in the audit, and that we have here. So I think this is appropriate for what this is supposed to be, but I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth. But due to the timing, I tried to want to reflect, reflect the scenario so we could get this to print, and in doing so, we, I took the liberty of the 25,000 in the CIP versus like a $50,000 cut. So I'll stop there. If you want to see what the other flyer looked like, I can ask Donna to please put that up if you want. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, I mean, this is, this is what we've done in past years, I think it works. On the, on the, on the 125 for open space, I know Andy had talked to me, and I said, let's, let's start with just flat funding. I mean, I, I, it is our responsibility to state where cuts come on the general operating budget. You know, we don't have the bottom line, but we do have the line-by-line. So I, I figured to me, it seemed to make sense to, to do a flat line on that, the rest of it we'll just have to somehow find as we go along the year. So in order to try to get something going, that's kind of what we did and why. What's, what's the feeling of the body? Tiffany?
Um, I, Andy, I really like the look of the new one, I, I think it is a bit clearer and as, from, from a design perspective, I like that there's a little bit more white space, it doesn't feel as overwhelming on this page with the charts. And I cannot agree with you more that if we are going to show staffing changes at the schools, we need to have that same information for the town. So I thank you for being kind of proactive on that front, because it was something I was going to recommend when we were done with budget season, because I think we need to be fair to all three budgets. But, you know, personally, I think the look of what you've done this year is a little bit better, it's probably a little more palatable to the average voter. And so I, I'm fine with what you presented, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with the reasoning behind how open space, how that cut has been reflected, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that as well, to move this forward.
Anyone else, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with both of you that giving open space the same amount of money that they were allocated last year, 125 is fine, and I'd like to keep it at that.
Gail?
Yes, I definitely agree that flatlining it, leaving it the way it was last year is preferable.
Peter?
So the balance, so I'm in agreement with the open space, the, the balance that the town has, government has to find, are we, do we need to understand what that is going throughout the year, or is it just simply that they adhere to their budget?
We're gonna have to find that money, you know, somehow, you know, it, it, you know, it, it, there are some things that, you know, the, the amounts fluctuate, possibly, you know, the road, you know, the, the road safety materials, i.e. sand salt, may be there if we have a, a, a Cinderella winter, not a bad winter. You know, I can leave it up to Andy to, if he wanted to state anything else, but.
It's, it's similar to what we did last year, we did get cut last year, and we didn't pinpoint where it was coming from, we just showed it in the general government side, and then through, through attrition with employment changes and, and certain, like, certain things, whether winter was a harsh or not harsh winter, we, we can move some monies around. So we're gonna try to cover it without pinpointing it, but if we, if we can't, then, like Dan says, we can, we can trim either some of the road repair monies, some of the winter materials monies, and then if we have a bad winter, then we would like normal years come back for a supplemental appropriation, but we'll, we'll try to adhere to the budget as the numbers reflect when the voters approve it.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a, a proposed resolution. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize the explanatory text flyer be prepared and distributed for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget referendum as presented by the town staff. Hearing discussion, is there one have any other items to discuss on that? Okay, hearing none. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Whitman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Is there anything else that we need to discuss on this topic, Andy, or are we set?
No, I believe that if you approve that the way it was proposed, the new version, we're all set, unless Donna thinks something else needs to be done.
I think we're, I think we're good for now, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, our next. That would be our Tax Abatement Program Annual Interest Rate Review.
Yeah, let me just get caught up here, too much going on. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Item 9F, Tax Abatement Program Annual Interest Rate Review. Consider Ordinance Chapter 320, Article 12, Abatement Deferral on Property Taxes for Persons of Limited Income Annual Interest Rate Review. This is something we do every year. The Tax Abatement Ordinance, Chapter 320, Article 12, was established by the Board of Selectmen in April 2000. The ordinance was created pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 12-124A. The ordinance caps a property owner's taxes on a residential dwelling at 8% of the total income from any source. Taxes that exceed that amount are conveyed to the town in the form of a lien created and securing an obligation to reimburse the town in the amount of the taxes abated with interest. Those taxes, along with the interest, are paid to the town by no later than the date of the sale of a transfer of such real property, or upon the death of the last surviving owner. As part of the annual interest rate review, the board has options to adjust the interest rate. Period. The town manager is recommending the interest rate for 2022 be set at 2.0%. I reached out to past selectman Brian O'Connell, who we've always kind of looked to. When he was on the board, he was gracious enough to chat with me, and we both agreed on this number. So with that resource, I'm presenting it to the Board of Selectmen to determine if that's something you're comfortable with, or if you want to discuss or change that to something other than that.
Okay, opening up to the board, what's your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
We always try to keep this low, I know interest rates are going up. But if somebody is applying to this program, then money is tight for them, I don't want to raise the interest rate for them. I'm, I'm very comfortable leaving it at the 2%.
Okay.
Chairman Larson, just so you know, the, the current interest rate is 1.5%.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
You would be raising it by half a percent.
Okay, I know my personal feeling is I've always relied on Brian, because that's what he does, it's not what I do. So I've always been told, you know, rely on the experts, and in my book, Brian's the expert, so. If, he thought that was good, I don't know, listen, I'll listen to what other people have to say. Mark, or?
Gail, would, would you like to keep it at 1.5? If, if you do, I don't agree with you.
I was just gonna say that, Mr. Chairman, I would prefer to leave it at 1.5. This has not cost the town any money. The, the town recoups it all upon the sale of the property, the death of the owners, and these are the people who need the help. So therefore I would take back what I said, I'd rather have it left at 1.5.
I, I agree with Gail.
Okay, Tiffany?
Yeah, I agree, I, I, I think y'all put it well. I don't know that I'm comfortable raising it at this point.
Peter?
Yeah, I can support that recommendation, just to maintain it the way it is.
Okay. And as I say, I, I usually defer to, to Brian, because he's, that's kind of his job. But I will go along with the body. I am, as I've stated, even during the budget sessions that we had, very nervous with, with the cost of everything, energy, fuel, electricity, everything increasing. I think it could be a, a hard ride for some people. You know, not everybody, but I think it could be a hard ride for some, so. At any rate, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen, that the tax abatement interest rate for the 2022 be set at 1.5%. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Okay, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Uh, Gail?
Gail Whitman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Next.
I believe we're at 9H.
No, gee.
Mess up my packet.
The license agreement?
Oh yeah, that's what Peter Starck has been waiting for all night.
Oh, he, he just wanted to visit with us, come on.
Yeah, I've, I've been moving this packet around, so I got some stuff mixed up, so yes, thank you. 9G is approved license agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the town of Hebron. So with that, Donna has that up on the screen. Peter, would you like to start talking in regards to that while I find it?
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. So the, our Regional Dispatch Center is working on a project with the State of Connecticut to give all their member agencies access to and be able to utilize the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network. So that network is a state-of-the-art network that I, that I believe currently is in use by the, the state police. But it's, it's gonna be made available to public safety and municipalities. So in, in the town of Hebron, the fire department, EMS, police, public works, emergency management, we could all utilize this network. And so again, our, our dispatch center is working on that project right now. And what they're really looking for is in their planning, or their infrastructure planning, they need to know if we're interested, it's that we're not committing to undertaking this project, but they need to save space in their infrastructure for us, they need a placeholder, just basically saying, yeah, we're interested. So they can, they can properly plan on their end. So I actually asked, and he's attending tonight, the, the operations director from Town and County Mutual Aid, Doug Resico. He's here to provide the technical expertise on this subject that I cannot provide. So Doug, if you want to say, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words about the, the program and how it works, and, and the benefits, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief, for inviting us to attend tonight. My name is Doug Resico, I'm the operations director of Town and County Mutual Aid. We are Hebron's 911 answering point, we also are the dispatch center for your fire and EMS. About four years ago, we met with all of our service chiefs, and we began to embark upon a program to improve our radio infrastructure. Communities like Hebron for years have had areas of town that didn't have adequate radio coverage. We've made some minimal improvements over the last couple of years to improve that with, with adding some infrastructure in the north end of town, the south end of town, some alerting infrastructure at the firehouse. Unfortunately, while they've improved things, they haven't brought things to where they need to be. We submitted a bond to the state of Connecticut that was approved last year by OPM on the bond commission for we had applied for three and a half million dollars. We were awarded three million. Unfortunately, with COVID, we're seeing some very significant price increases as a result of that. And in the last nine months, our relationship with the state of Connecticut and the Connecticut land mobile radio network, they've invited us to integrate our systems into their infrastructure. So primarily, this radio system was built back in the late nineties to support the Connecticut State Police. However, in today's terms, the state police are probably one twentieth of the users of that system. So the, the constables in town utilize the state radio network. We have the ability to integrate our infrastructure into that network and seamlessly blend the legacy communications that the fire department utilizes today with three million dollar bond that we have. We are going to be making some improvements around Hebron and with the town of Marlborough to improve the communication gaps that we have with the legacy infrastructure. But the downside is, is that we can't offer increased channel capacity with our legacy networks where with the state of Connecticut, we have the ability to do that. So for example, your public works department may operate on a low band channel. The fire department's operating on a different type of low band radio channel, a UHF network. And unfortunately, when you have critical incidents, none of these resources have the ability to easily communicate together or operate during a time of a disaster. So by integrating our infrastructure with the state network, your constables, resident troopers, if you guys choose to move your public works operations into this, other resources for the schools could be moved into this. You can have one platform that everybody has the ability to operate on. One of the things that the state of Connecticut has done is while when you read the agreement, it, it does talk about some costs. When we look at this from the emergency operations perspective with Talon County Mutual Aid, we're relying heavily on the fixed network infrastructure that's provided by the state of Connecticut, the backbone, to provide the, the, the radio coverage that we need. The only investment that needs to be made at the local level is the subscriber unit. So mobile radios that go in vehicles and portable radios that firefighters and, and public works employees and constables may carry on their hip to communicate back to their appropriate dispatch centers. So the state of Connecticut carries all of the financial burden of the fixed network infrastructure that provides a tremendous amount of capacity to its end users. When the state began to improve the system about four years ago, they decided to open this up to all of the municipalities to be able to take advantage of the system and essentially create a piece of network that allows multiple agencies to communicate with each other. We don't enjoy that today. If we need to put new channels in, the FCC doesn't have the channel capacity in, in the bands that we used to improve and provide additional channels in today's network. So as we look at stabilizing some of the resources that we have today, we're looking at the future and what we're leaving behind. And we're looking at integration of the state system over the next five to 10 years is, is being the path that we want to take. Today's numbers, as I mentioned to you, we got a three million dollar bond. That number to, to do everything that we wanted to do is probably going to cost us about four point five million today. So we're about a million and a half shy of achieving the goals that we'd originally set out. The budget that we put together was done in late two thousand and nineteen. And to, by the time everything got through the, the bonding process, COVID hit. And as you all know, we see the side effects of COVID and other things that are going on throughout the region and throughout the world right now that's impacting prices. The ability to get equipment is also difficult with the chip shortages that are, that are existing in the electronics market. So we're looking at integrating in the long term over the state side. Our intent is to build a hybrid type network that integrates the state system into today's legacy networks. And then those communities that want to not invest into this today, but may want to invest into it tomorrow, can do so at their own pace. There are municipalities with the ARPA funding that are making a full investment into the state radio system. So those things exist. There's public works departments that are operating on it today. Police departments, other fire departments that are operating on it. So our intent by signing the, the memorandum of understanding indicates to us and to the state where we need to invest our time and money to make sure that we build the integration into the network. So we're future-proofing what we're doing for not only the town of Hebron, but also the town of Marlborough and the other sixteen towns that we provide service to throughout Eastern Connecticut here. That's, that's a lot. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to take some if anybody has any.
Now, this, this is a computer-based type system, I believe.
It, it's, it has a, it's radio infrastructure, but it's, it's driven through computer technology. It's, it's an IP-based radio network.
Okay, and what, what security or backup systems are in place if the computer were to go down?
It's not a specific computer. The state of Connecticut has three separate hosts that drive their network. And should there be critical failures of a connectivity to a site, that site then becomes an independent repeater. So all of that is built into their radio network and each one of the subscriber units knows what to do in the event of a failure.
Okay.
It's highly robust, highly resilient, more so than we can provide C systems today.
Okay. Under three, the town's responsibilities. Where are we at with our existing radio equipment? And then I think the, 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 the big monkey is going to be, and what are the costs? You know, especially if we do have to upgrade our equipment. As it is, we've already had our, our proposed budget cut by the Board of Finance. So we're already starting off at a deficit. And like so many towns, you know, it's, it's great ideas, but everything costs dollars. So I think we as a board really need to know just what, what types of costs are we going to be incurring as this project goes forward?
So, Mr. Chairman, so, so this is certainly, this is certainly a future project. This is not something that would be undertaken this year. Honestly, i- if we started working on it now, th- this is a year or two away at the, at the earliest for, for us.
Okay.
Again, this is just something that we're looking at for the future. I, I think in the future, we, we need to, to seriously consider it. I currently have a, a state radio as a state fire coordinator. The system is, is extremely robust. I can talk on my portable radio to another person on a portable radio in Litchfield County, like we were in the same room. So it's an incredible system. But, but honestly, Dan, we're, we're a few years away from that point.
Okay.
But we just.
We, we.
Respect, sorry. Yep.
If, if you sign this agreement today and you choose to put nothing on the network, there is no cost obligation to the town of Hebron. We have municipalities that signed their agreements two years ago that haven't put any infrastructure on the network even up until today, and they have no cost obligation on this whatsoever. What does happen is the, the licensing of the subscriber units on the state system, they're able to plan for that and, and budget for those things appropriately. So the appropriate capacity for the potential integration that we're looking to do is available. And, you know, from today's perspective, if Hebron decided that they weren't going to integrate into this and they didn't want to sign the MOU, we probably wouldn't focus our efforts to build the necessary gateways to allow that integration just because of the, the limited funding that we do have. So, you know, Hebron signing this agreement today, there's no cost obligation. The way that we want to build this out for those agencies and those municipalities that have signed the MOUs is to ensure it's there and you guys can, can grow into this at your own pace. So it, it's not something where you have to go out and buy all new subscriber units in one year. You may decide that you want to buy five mobiles and five portables in, in, in a single year and, and implement those and do something in a phased-in approach, which from a budget perspective may be more fiscally responsible than purchasing a whole bunch of, of units at once. Because typically, when you do that, you know, the, the life expectancy of these devices, the state utilized devices for about 20 years before they needed to be upgraded. You know, we anticipate them the last fifteen to 20 years.
Okay. Yes, Andy?
So just to tell you where we are today. So nineteen ninety-six, I came to Hebron. Pete Carbone was here as emergency management director. We were advised then and had a committee put together underneath Robert Lee's direction, who was the town manager at the time, to move the low band units from the public works up to high band at that time. This option clearly was not offered. Since that time, this gentleman, Doug stated, other municipalities have joined in. So this does fit into a future plan that we're, we're, we're looking to do at some point. I've had conversations with our emergency management director today, the, the chief of the fire department, along with the public works director. So this would be a win-win when we're ready and when we can afford to do it. What I would propose is follow suit with similar what East Tatum did. One of the things that's nice about this system is you don't have to put all new radios in all the vehicles. What they opted to do was give their employees walkie-talkies and they can integrate with the fire department, the town hall, the schools. And all during the day, no matter where they are in the town of East Tatum. Town of East Tatum had a lot more dead spots than Hebron did, and it rectified that situation. You're down by the river by the Good Street Opera House, you're out at Devil's Hop Yard or out by the golf course in Hatline. There was a lot of issues. This solved it. We have some issues, but not to that extent. It is an expensive project if you want to do it all at once. As what was stated, what we would propose is when we did some sort, or what I would propose or recommend is when we do some sort of bonding project, we would try to add the cost of an upgraded infrastructure of this kind to the financing there and phase it in. Because as he stated, fifteen to 20 years for the radios, you wouldn't want to have to pay for all that in one year. So we would look to attach it to some sort of bonding project. But the committee is going to be formed. It would be myself, the chief public works director and emergency management director, probably a couple of people at large, possibly somebody from the Board of Selectmen if interested. But I think this is a good step forward. We've been talking about this, as I said, for 27 years. The state came out with this plan. Now they're offering up to our dispatch center. It's, it's a win-win for Hebron. That's some of the steps that are going to be taken that we wouldn't have to do otherwise. So that's just my recommendation. We're headed that way. The radios that we have, probably fifty to sixty of them down at the public works are going to be obsolete. We've been warned and told, and luckily they haven't, you know, cut us off yet, but it, it's the way to go. The biggest thing is, as he stated earlier, is the interaction with the other departments in case of a disaster. That's imperative in order to get the, the work that we need done in this, in the climate that we're in now. So that's just a quick, I don't want to beat this. I just, just from my perspective, we were looking to head that way, but we want to do it as financially frugal and as fiscally responsible not to do it all in one year. As I stated, definitely will not be this year or even probably next year. But we would put a committee together and come back to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation, a funding plan, and actually what we would need to purchase and what that would do for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mark, please. Yes, please, Mark.
Just, just quickly to bring some realism to this as an active shooter instructor. If there was a shooting at the school, I, I can't talk to EMS. I can't tell them when to come in and communicate to provide first aid to injured victims. And not just in a school. If there's a shooting in a bar, if we have multiple mass casualties, we can't talk to each other. And, and other active shooter scenarios, it's recommended that everybody be able to communicate and coordinate what part they're, they're doing in this. And if you can't do that, you're wasting time, you're wasting seconds, and you're not going to be responding to the situation the way you should. And you know that too, Dan, having been in the fire. And if you, you know, if the police and the fire can't talk and EMS and the police can't talk and the school can't talk, because principals should be able to relay when information's going on at the school to give the police and EMS the, the right information and how to respond because seconds matter. So just putting a other people are already doing this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Gail or Pete or Tiffany? Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I appreciate the chief and, and especially Doug getting into the detail. I, I'm with Mark and I think ensuring public safety is, is really our main charge when the day is done. And this puts us in a position to have the, the most options available to have the right technology in place to support public safety. And obviously, it gives us an opportunity to move at, at a reasonable pace, as Andy described. We're not immediately charged with investing a significant amount of money, but it puts us in position to set ourselves up for the future. And so I'm fully in support of moving forward.
Okay. Okay, Gail or Tiffany?
I'm in support as well. I agree with the points that are made. Thank you.
Okay.
The gentleman Doug has answered a lot of the questions and concerns that I had. So I'm in support.
Okay. I'm going to read the motion and then we'll wrap up any discussion and go from there. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the license agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the town of Hebron and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to sign the agreement to allow for the town of Hebron to explore participation in the Connecticut land mobile radio network. Discussion? Hearing none. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for hanging in there. I know it's been a long meeting. I appreciate you weighing your turn. Thanks again. And Doug, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Look. Next will be the drug urinalysis screening program.
Yes, for sworn personnel. So nine H item on the agenda, the Police Accountability Act, Public Act twenty dash zero one requires each police officer submit to a urine, drug screening in accordance with Connecticut general statute seven dash two nine four D and post C, a general notice twenty dash twelve. The screening includes controlled substances, including but not limited to antibiotic steroids. Period. I'm sorry, antibiotic steroids. The town of Hebron Drug Free Workday Program does not include antibiotic steroids. The policy prepared by resident state trooper Bryce Reed should be adopted to provide guidance for the implementation of the new requirement. So there's a proposed motion, but this is something we need to do. So we reached out to a couple of other entities and we developed what you see here in front of us today to bring us into compliance. So without any further ado, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'll read the motion. We'll open it up for discussion. Move the Hebrew Board Uh, move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the drug urinalysis screening program. For sworn personnel for the Hebron Police Department effective immediately and, uh. I'm looking to see if there's any kind of a. Date or whatever number. This would be as required by the Connecticut, uh, General Statutes 7 dash 254D. Uh, open it up for discussion? Any discussion? I kind of also think that the fire department. As, as because of the fact that they are also going into people's houses, emergency situations should also have something similar to this. I'm not sure if in fact they do or not anymore. Uh, you know, I just wanted to put that out there. I think anybody in public safety, yes, Pete, if you would.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can, uh, we can certainly, um. Copy and paste Bryce's policy there, if, if, if the board would like, we can certainly do that.
Well, I, 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 I feel it's important, I'm not sure what the cost would be. Uh, that might be the only negative thing that we might have to consider. Andy?
I, I, I would request, because this is mandatory through the general statutes for the police or sworn officers. Let's get this out of the way so we can comply. And then we can look at, um, our policy and then we can look at what the fire department's policy says. And then we'll get you a cost. Uh, right now, we're, this is, uh, an additional cost we weren't, uh, budgeting for. So in order to put all the firemen on there, I'd want to know, as you stated, what the cost would be first.
Yeah, that would be kind of, you know, but, okay, okay, so any other discussion?
This is Donna, I can tell you that a regular five panel drug test, there are regular tests are like $65. The, um, anabolic steroid tests are $200 for one employee.
So there you go.
And I don't even know what an antibiotic steroid is. Okay, uh. So at any rate, so hearing the, uh, motion, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be the. 2023, yes?
Yeah, I believe it's item nine, aye, approval of the 2023, uh, Community Project Funding Grant Application for the WPCA Infiltration slash Flow Correction, uh, Project.
Yes.
So I'll read this and then I'll explain what I know. Um, Kevin Kelly, the WPCA Administrator, recently submitted the attached grant application for the fiscal year 2023. Community Project Funding through the second congressional district. In the amount of $500,000 for a WPCA Infiltration Inflow Correction Project. The grant application deadline was April 15th, 2022. If the grant is received, it will be, be brought back to the board. And the town, WPCA, will respond, will be responsible for 20% project match if we were to get that. So I just want to clarify in this statement. We had talked about this when we were redoing the charter. Uh, there's money out there for these types of projects. We know this is going to be an issue down the road, so I approved him to apply for it. That does not commit us to anything we can, we can bow out. But in order to meet the deadline for the application for this money, we submit it. So therefore, if we were to get it and we would have to come up with that 20% match, we would come back to the Boards of Selectmen, Boards of Finance. You know, at that time to determine if that's something we want to move forward with or, or, uh, come up with that match. Um, but once again, with that kind of money out there for this type of infrastructure, you want to make sure that Hebron's got its name, uh, in the hat. So that's what we did here, um, there's a, a proposed, uh, resolution. In your packets, you can see through Joe Courtney's office, Kevin Kelly applied for this. Um, and I think the 500,000, we'd be looking anywhere between like a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars for that match. If we were to, one, receive the grant and two, if the boards, uh, Boards of Finance and Boards of Selectmen wanted to move forward, so.
Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of $500,000. Through the fiscal year 2023 Community Project Funding Grant Program. For the WPCA Infiltration Inflow Correction Project. Uh, opening it up for discussion, uh, I believe, I. Uh, this would be money that would be coming from the town if we were to get this, not WPCA?
That would, that would be determined, that's a great question. Uh, it, it could be coming from both, it could be coming from one or the other, that would still be determined. The mindset was, there's money coming down through the congressional districts, let's get our name in the hat. And that's something we can deal with at a later date. If we didn't get it in, we wouldn't even be considered, so.
Right.
In our mind, this was the first step.
Yeah, anybody have any other questions? Concerns?
It doesn't cost us to apply for it, um. We should apply for it and see what happens, it's a lot of money.
Yep. Okay, uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, our next would be our draft agenda for the May 5th, 2022 meeting. And. As I say, the only thing we want to put on. Uh, that would be the, um. Well, try to get the answers on the cannabis thing and the pollinator pathway resolution. See if we can get our answers and, and get that to bed one way or another. And I know. So. Oh, anyway.
I know I had it somewhere.
But anyway, so again, like normal, if anybody has anything else they need to add to it or whatever. Uh, in addition to those things, get the information in, uh, to the town. Any other new business? Hey, hearing none, our next would be the consent agenda items. I don't know if we can do them all at once, because I was not here, uh, on March 8th. So maybe. We will just vote on them individually and that would take, take care of that. Uh, so move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the minutes as of March 1st, 2022. Any changes, a discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, motion that we approve the me, the March 8th. Meeting minutes, uh, the regular meeting and budget workshop. Any discussion? Hearing none, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, I'll abstain since I was not here. Uh. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2022 Regular Meeting Budget Workshop. Open it up, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Make a motion that we approve the March 17th, 2022 Regular Meeting. Open it up for a discussion? Hearing none, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, make a motion that we approve the March 22nd, 2022 Regular Meeting Budget Workshop. As presented, open it up for any comments? Hearing none, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, make a motion that we approve the tax refunds as listed. Open it up for any discussion? Hearing none, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be our liaison reports, does anybody have anything for liaison reports? Across Tiffany?
Um, Open Space did not meet, um, you heard from the Green Committee today. Um, Economic Development did meet at a special meeting on April 5th. Um, they reviewed, um, the marketing and branding study. Um, so the FHI Studios has started working on the next piece, which is the public survey, so they hope to have that finished in May. Um, so it can be sent out once the EDC approves it. Um, that's all I have from that, I'm sure once we get our new director in, you know, we can, I can kind of. We can get a handle on things there, but that was kind of a key highlight from that meeting, thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter?
Uh, Board of Finance, obviously we, it's been covered with the budget meetings and Parks and Rec, uh, Commission meets on Monday, although, uh, just. There was some, uh, sub, the subcommittee on the Dog Park has started to explore, uh, details and, uh, doing some site business, so that's moving along, thank you.
Okay, Gail?
Yes, the, um, I have nothing to report from the Hebron Board of Ed, um. That's all been mostly in the, um, budget workshops. Um, for the Douglas Library, there's a few good programs coming up in the next few weeks. The Teen Gaming Club is going to be meeting April 26th at 2:30. Um, remembering G. Fox and Company will be on May 10th. And that's the presentation on the Landmark Department Store and it's put on by the Connecticut Historical Society. I saw that program some years ago, so anyone in the audience, see it, it is great. Equity Power Structures and Color Blindness will be May 17th at 6:30. The Alliance for Collaborative Equity returns to further explore how our society continues to, um. Punish citizens based on color. Uh, and the Senior Center, Commission on Aging. Um, the Advanced Fitness Programs are, and Yoga, two separate programs, but they both meet on Mondays and Wednesdays. There's also several other programs, but those are two big ones. And the AARP Drivers Course is being given virtually. And, uh, the next session will be April 28th and there's several, uh, four or five others after that. If anyone is interested in refreshing their driving skills. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, AHM, the Hebron Police and RAM are collaborating on another Drug Takeback Day. And I believe it's the last Saturday of April, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, and I have nothing myself. Uh, Historic Properties did meet, they're, they are still working on some property designations. Sadly, not a lot going real fast. You know, at any rate, uh, and Fire Department, their meeting was when we had our budget. So, okay, at this point in time, I think our next thing would be the, uh, executive session. Is that?
We have public comment first, Mr. Chair.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm reading too far along, um, okay.
We do have a few, um, public comments that were left earlier in the meeting that we do need to read into the record. Um, these were left in the chat, so from, um, Frank Zikis, this was to Matt, our new, um, Director of Planning and Development. Welcome aboard Matthew from Frank Zikis, Vice Chairman, Hebron Planning and zoning commission. Um, from Peter Starkell, Fire Chief, welcome Matt, looking forward to meeting you. And then from Peter Yorio, on behalf of the AHM Board and staff, we would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their consideration and support. And that was for, um, ARPA funding.
Okay.
And then, um. From Ann Zikis, maybe Frank Zikis, um, your support to the Open Space Budget is appreciated. Andy and Sherman Larson, this is a wise investment in Hebron's future. This helps reduce Hebron's property taxes, helps Hebron be more affordable, equitable and promotes diversity. And then from Lily Rhodes, sir, seem, seems to do a good job connecting all the emergency responder groups. That is it for public comment.
Okay, thank you, thank you Tiffany. I don't know why, I, I, yeah, my mind is not totally here, I apologize. Um, okay, uh, Andy, are we on for the executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you just would have to invite myself in.
Okay, uh, so that at this point in time, we would, uh, go into executive session. Inviting in Andy Turney, Town Manager, uh, for a potential litigation as shown.
Just for, just for anybody that's following, I don't anticipate this is going to be very long at all. And I don't think there'll be any action needed to be taken, so we'll probably come out fairly quickly and adjourn the meeting. So I just wanted to let people know if they were planning on hanging around, there's not really anything more that's going to be, uh, done in the public setting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.